Six oh seven, Mr. Lawson.
Okay. Thank you for joining Woodlands Committee of the Hall, May eleventh, twenty twenty-one, at six oh seven. Roll call, please.
Mayor Poole.
President.
Rosemary Brown. President.
President.
Pamela Cistero.
President.
Mr. Burkhalter. Ms. Boyd.
Here.
Robert Lawson is here. Ms. Tribune.
Here.
Okay, I'd like to give everybody time to look over the minutes from the last county meeting, April thirteenth, twenty twenty-one. Any questions or concerns with the minutes from April thirteenth, twenty twenty-one? Can somebody make a motion to approve the minutes?
Make a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
I second.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Okay, first thing on the agenda tonight, ladies and gentlemen, is the employee's contract. Oh, I'm sorry.
Our eyes.
I. I.
Any opposed? Mostly carries.
Okay, the first thing tonight, ladies and gentle- gentlemen, on the agenda, we have employment contract for Village Police Division.
Hey, Brother Chair.
Yes, yes, sir.
Can we jump down to the second item, the Baldwin Mayor's Court system?
Oh, yeah, no problem.
I believe that that contract piece, Jerry want to do, want to talk about, but let's jump down while we have Tim. We talk about the Baldwin's Mayor Court System.
Okay, then we'll come back to that with a.
Appreciate it.
With the Police Division update. Okay, we'll start with the Baldwin's Mayor's Court System.
Sure. The Village Mayor's Court Clerk had brought it to our attention that the current software they're using for the mayor's court doesn't quite have all the modules and items on it to kind of facilitate some of the things that the court needs to do. The system that they currently have is utilized by the police department to do, you know, more or less police things. But there's some deficiencies where it comes to the court side of things. They had reached out to the Baldwin Group and kind of got a, an idea of what they would need from the Baldwin Group. Baldwin Mayor's Court software is utilized by several courts in the area in Hamilton County. When I was an auditor, I audited a whole lot of Baldwin stuff, so I can tell you that the system works pretty well. The, the cost of the Baldwin system can be subsidized by the Mayor's Court Computer Fund, that's certainly allowable. The first year is expensive because you're purchasing the software and the licensing. So the first year of implementation is fifteen thousand four hundred dollars. After that, there's simply a maintenance fee of about three thousand dollars a year. Switching over to the Baldwin system will allow the, will allow the Mayor's Court to do online docketing, as well as keep up with some of the Supreme Court reports that they're required to do. It also will give them the ability to take ticket payments over the phone, as well as certain other items that'll, that'll help the court out. So as, as long as everybody's kind of in agreement, I was going to go ahead and speak with the, the law director and have her put legislation together for us to go ahead and move forward with that. Certainly wanted to bring it up and maybe the whole make sure I had Mayor's Blessing on it, certainly, as well as the rest of council. You guys do have to approve that as a contract.
So again, Tim, these funds are coming from the Mayor's Court.
Yes, so that Mayor's Court Computer Fund, which is twenty-nine oh five, will be able to facilitate the entire cost of that software.
Okay. Okay.
Madam, I mean.
I think Pam had a question. Go ahead, Pam.
I do. Can, will you be able to take electronic payments through that system as well? I know you said telephone, but electronics, so if people want to pay with their credit cards?
Yes, they'll be able to pay their, pay their tickets and fines through the, through the website.
And you said it would come out of fund twenty-nine oh five, and we have enough in the budget to take care of that?
We do.
Okay.
Now, just, just to make sure, Pam, twenty-nine oh five is the Mayor's Court line item?
Right.
Not general fund?
Right, got it. Thank you.
Yeah, no, no general fund money will be utilized for this.
Are there any more questions or concerns for Tim? Somebody might have one.
So is it okay for him to, to submit legislation on this for us?
Yes.
Okay.
Hey, Tim, I have one last other question. I'm sorry. My question is, as far as the reporting piece of it, is it, does it generate that too as well, more, you know, more of today reporting?
I believe it will. You know, with, with the, the part of Baldwin that I'm familiar with was more of the financial side. So it will produce detailed, we'll say, payment reports where it all, you know, if you went down and, and looked at them, it would show, you know, each, each individual that, that received a ticket, how much they paid. It'll show you the breakdown between Village of Woodlawn, court costs and fines, as well as the fines that are associated with the state of Ohio and Hamilton County. I know that the, the Clerk's Office is more interested in, while they, while they like the financial side as well. They're more interested in the, the Supreme Court side of it to help keep them in compliance with the court side.
Okay, sounds great. Thanks.
Okay, to keep it moving, we can go with, we can go with Tony with Public Works Truck, Public Works Truck?
I think that, that might be more mine than Tony's at this point.
Right.
Okay, well, go ahead and take it over to Tim.
Absolutely. We've kind of been talking in Finance Committee about purchasing a new dump truck for Public Works. I was able to reach out to PNC Huntington and US Banks for the purpose of a lease purchase agreement on a new dump truck. US Bank was able to give us the best rate on it at, at one point nine six percent. And I estimated about a hundred and fifty thousand dollar loan. We were able to find a, a dump truck vendor through the state of Ohio purchasing agreement. This year, the vendor that was, that was bid out to the state of Ohio was Freightliner. I know Public Works Director was able to meet with the Freightliner representative today, and they kind of looked over some options for the dump truck. And I know he is, the, the representative is putting together an estimate for the dump truck that, that Tony believes will, will best be utilized by the village. I know some of the things we talked about, we're making sure there was a lot of stainless steel on it, so it doesn't rust out as quickly. And then we'll also look into putting a plow and leaf package on that truck. So I think I did okay with the one fifty estimate. I, I, it may go up a little bit because we do want to add stainless steel to it, or more stainless steel to it, but it should still be within that ballpark, I believe. At least that's my expectation. I believe that rep is supposed to have the numbers for us here in the next couple of days. And I can talk more about that at Finance Committee as well.
Okay. Thanks for that, Tim. We can keep it moving and we can go to, his name is on the line, we can go to the Fire Department. Update on the Fire Department? I can come back to the Fire Department.
There he is.
Okay, I'm here. Actually, A.C. Pittman should be doing it. Is he, did he come on yet? I'm just battling, thrown out back. But he's.
I see his name.
Sorry.
Okay, there he is.
You guys able to hear me okay? How's everybody doing?
We're good, doing good.
I apologize on the time error.
Word.
So, I don't know if Chief talked to you guys real quick. We are getting our trucks here shortly. Tomorrow, we should be getting our new engine. And it'll take us a few weeks to get that in service, but it should be here tomorrow afternoon. The ladder will be going up either Friday or Monday. We're getting more details on exactly when that's going to happen. When we do that, what we're waiting on is for the Pierce ladder that they're giving us to borrow for the rough timeframe of a, maybe about a week. Could be a little bit longer, but they're guesstimating about a week's time to completely service the ladder and then give it back to us. So that's real positive after last few years ago and what we've all gone through. I know there was a, a little bit of mention about overtime previously, and just wanted to let everybody know that we did, when we originally went over to the new full-time status of more people, one of the requirements we had was to submit the reasons and why we were in overtime. And that was a consistent thing we did with Ashley and Alan. And we still follow that pretty much with what we submit with our Excel sheets and, and that kind of stuff. So we just want to make everybody aware that when it comes to overtime, we're just never going to have a nil month, unfortunately. That just nature of the beast, unfortunately. Want to touch a little bit on Community Paramedicine? So it's a new program that's going to be an collaboration. Let me get my notes here real quick with Princeton. So it's going to be a real positive process that we're going to do. And it's going to be one of the, shall we say, the newest out there, because we're not only going to find my notes here real quick on who we're partnering with. It's going to be Princeton and.
Scarlet.
Yeah, and also the Lincoln Heights Outreach Incorporated.
LHOI.
Yes, correct. Thank you, sir. So what we're looking to do is there, as we all know, there's people in need of assistance. We have homebound. We have people that may have a language barrier, et cetera. We have those who need things. Maybe when we go to their homes for a fall, we realize they're at risk at their home. So there are community outreach groups that we want to connect them to. So what we want to do is create a program that'll decrease the number of unnecessary trips to the hospital, while also meeting the more specific needs of the resident. So LHOI will have community outreach navigators who will act as liaisons, and members of the community can also volunteer. And we'll partner with Princeton. And the high school students will have opportunities to receive training and experience while working with the navigators, firefighters, and other volunteers. So more information will be coming, but this is a, a great and exciting program for us. So not only are we assisting our seniors, we're also assisting our youth in coming together with our seniors. Everybody's got to take care of everybody because we're a family. So along with that, we're lucky enough to say that we just received our first shipment of vaccine for our homebound. So we have eight that I was given from Hamilton County Public Health, and two in Lincoln Heights, and we'll be getting those out here very shortly. There is a a link on Hamilton County Public Health. I did send that to Monica, so hopefully we can get that out eventually here on the website, et cetera, where those who think they can qualify for homebound can go on that link and they can see if they qualify, and then they'll go through the county, and the county once a week updates us, and we'll be able to assist them once we get that shipment. But we have to have a minimum, therefore, we meet the five. So for example, we're giving out Johnson and Johnson, so we have to have a minimum of five for that vial. And once we do that, we'll be able to go out. So we got our ten, so we're going to be out with our two vials. So I think, other than that, that's pretty much a Fire Department in a nutshell. So I apologize if I went out of order.
But here I got a couple of questions.
Any, any questions and concerns for Pittman?
I, I have one.
Go ahead, Brian.
So, Pitt, I, the information that you're talking about getting to Monica for something from the website, is there something that is on another website? Is it on LHOI's website? Talks about what this looks like, what the criteria is for such program? Because where I was going was, on my next step with that is, what can the Fire Department do to create a better awareness of getting the vaccination? You know, those people that are on the bubble or on the fence, what can we do? Do we come up with some type of idea? We can, certainly, we don't have our, our board down there working, but we can come up with some type of campaign. I mean, doesn't have to be big, but just trying to, to, to meet people at their needs.
Absolutely. So definitely getting it on the website is our first goal. Second goal is, we are going out and we're doing the Touch of Door program like we did before. We're going to be doing our hydrants and Touch of Door program. And the goal is to try and educate the community of what's out there, what's available. We're going to go to different outreach, outreach programs. For example, we're going to send it out to our church, local churches. We're going to send it out to the Council on Aging, et cetera, so we can help get that out as well.
Okay, okay, good, good, good stuff, good stuff. All right, thanks, Bob. Appreciate that.
Okay. Okay. We have another, we got a question. Go ahead, Pam.
I was going to say, it sounds like a fantastic idea for the homebound vaccines. But I'm assuming that some of those people may not have access to the internet or certain things. So have you thought of other ways that we can reach them? Would they make a call if they're interested? How do we get that group information that this is an option?
Absolutely. So if they don't have internet access, that's fine. What we can do is, we're going to try to facilitate within the Fire Department. If somebody calls the Fire Department, we will walk them through the process. So we are working on that to get basically a script for our firefighters. If somebody calls and says, hey, I got wind. We also are aware of our own homebound as well. Those that we have taken to the hospital and through word of mouth and et cetera. And we will go, one of the things I personally would like to do is go and meet and talk to them and see what services they do need. And that way, we can work with them, not just for the vaccine, but in the future for anything else. So our goal is a bit.
I'm sorry. Sorry. Go ahead. Sorry.
I was going to say, so if anybody does know of anybody, or they think, they may say, hey, I think there was somebody who lived at such and such an address. They can just email me or Katie or Chief, and we will go out and we'll introduce ourselves to them and everything, and we'll see if they do need anything. And then I'll take a computer, we'll take computers with us, and we'll sit right there with them, and we'll fill out the program for them.
Yeah, okay.
I was going to say, maybe some of our local churches that are in our community, we could go start there. And maybe our rec center, try to use some of those places to post that information. Just so we know where, you know, we can get the word out that it is available for those who can't come out, we can come to them. I think it's just so important.
Absolutely. We do, and we are going to do definitely our churches.
Right.
Okay.
To, to, to your point, Pam, I think one of our avenues is why I'm saying that if, that we get this information, to get this information, and we understand before we put anything out on our website and/or code red, that we are putting out the right message. So I certainly.
Oh, I get it.
That's, that's our, our, our line of attack. But I certainly don't want to not have all the information. So we get that information, then we can proceed to put it on the website and do a code red as well.
Absolutely.
Okay, I totally agree.
And one of our goals also is, when we go out to visit our community members, is to also get them signed up. So they can also get code reds, and they can get EMA information and stuff of that nature as well.
Right.
Okay.
Thanks. Appreciate it.
Yeah, thanks for that little bit of information. Definitely appreciate that. That was some very good stuff there. Is there any more questions or concerns for Fire Department or Chief Ames while we have them on the line?
Chief Pittman, this is Tim. I think when you and I were in your office the other day, we're, did you, did you tell me, or did we see some pictures where Woodlawn was nationally recognized again?
Oh, yeah. I apologize. So our firefighters were featured on the Dennis Leary Foundation, which is the foundation that gave us thermal imaging devices. They featured, for those who don't know, my wife comes to a lot of our details and makes, and takes photographs for us. And so she puts them on our website, and they're free to anybody. There's no cost to them. But anyway, the Leary Foundation used those photographs, which were our firefighters, for their national campaign.
Oh, congratulations on that.
That's good stuff. Hey, Tim, that's the information that we need to hear first. That's the information we need to put on the website.
Right.
Right?
Yes.
That's, that's good stuff, good stuff. Well, congratulations.
Congratulations. Good.
Congratulations.
For that. Yes. Good, 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 good.
Okay, well, moving forward, thanks, thanks, guys, and keep up the good work and all the honors and stuff. We appreciate that out of you guys. Then we'll be moving on now to Police Division with Chief Tillman. He's on the line. Hi, Chief.
Good evening, Chair, members of council. I'll be real brief with what we have for the Police Division. One of our new police vehicles have, has been returned to our fleet and is in service. The other one is there being serviced. It was a little bit of a delay with the equipment that they had to install, so they had to order additional equipment. So we expect to have that one back late next week at the earliest. Another thing I'd like to mention to you, that I received an email from Jerry about attending our a PEP, which is our Public Entities Pool of Ohio, that's our insurance company. They were doing a use of force webinar that myself, the Assistant Chief, and Sergeant Kelly attended through Zoom. That information was very informative. We have the PowerPoint I intend to share with the rest of the staff to make sure that we're all understanding what our insurance carrier wants us to do as our insurance carrier, and make sure we in compliance. So very informative information, so I enjoyed that. I'm glad that it was passed on to us. Another update that I have is that we lost an officer to a resignation last week, last month. And we're currently conducting interviews, and I want to thank Tim for assisting us and the mayor, who participated in that last week. And we were able to identify a few applicants that we're running backgrounds on, that we completed backgrounds on. And then we go into the next phase of the hiring process before we bring their names to the council floor. Also, Tim sat in on a, another Zoom meeting that we were having with our Axon rep, who's also, they are a body cam rep, as well as our TASER rep. They were trying to offer us a bundle. Tim, you want to jump in a little bit, talk about that, because I don't want to say too much about it. I know that there's something that's being put into work, so if you want to add to that.
Sure. So, sorry about that. We sat in on, like Chief said, we had a Zoom meeting with the Axon representative. We currently have two contracts with Axon, one for body cameras and one for tasers. Current yearly contract through Axon for the village, seventeen thousand dollars. The Axon rep sent us a quote to go ahead and roll the, the two existing contracts into a new single contract, as well as potentially add in-car dash cameras, front rear dash cameras, to the, to the contract. The, the cameras would also be equipped to transmit video data to a cloud-based system, and it allows the police department to keep track of that data. And, and I know there's some auto tagging and things of that nature that go along with it. To include the cameras, the, the dash cameras into the contract would have brought the village's Axon contract up, or increased the village's Axon contract by about thirty-one thousand dollars a year. I think everybody, you know, the village, everybody's kind of on the same page where we kind of like the idea of having the in-car dash cameras. We kind of felt like thirty-one thousand was a little much for us to commit to just right away. So we're going to kind of look at some other options, see what else is out there, and try to advise accordingly. Don't want to cut them out of the equation yet. We just, with that kind of an increase, we just have to see what everybody else is offering, I think.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I, I'm considering easing, phasing them in at the vehicle at a time, whatever finance will support. So Tim's going to have options to present to council at a later date with regards to that. Because they felt it would be best that we bundle, since our TASER contract is going to expire in February. We're going to have to re-up on that if we want to continue to have that less-than-lethal weapon. The contract on that expires in February. So they were just trying to do a bundle package to make it all-inclusive, so that it would be easier on us. So that's why it was proposed. So if it, if we don't do the bundle, go ahead, Tim.
I'm sorry, Chief. I was going to cut in for a second. I think the, the TASER contract, we have to keep no matter what. I think currently Axon kind of has a monopoly on the tasers. So regardless, if we stick with, if we were to, to go in a different direction with another, we'll say, camera company, we would still probably have to keep that Axon contract for tasers. So that's, again, it's just other stuff to consider as we try to make a good decision and move forward.
Okay, thank you for the clarity. Everyone should have received our monthly report. I would like for you, if you haven't already, to take a look at, make, look at the use of force data, as well as the traffic safety data that was put there. Mayor, you had asked for the actual printout. That information is now attached to that report, so you can see the number of vehicles and the rate of speed that they were traveling. So that's all been attached to that report.
I've seen it. Thanks, Chief. Appreciate it.
That's all I have, unless anyone has questions.
Are there any questions or concerns for Tillman?
I have one for the Chief, Brother Chair. Chief, we talked about, I believe, last month about some concerns about the traffic flow down at the Dairy Queen in that area. Have we had an opportunity to just kind of made an observation of that and, and come back? And any feedback on that as of yet?
We've had made an observation. The, it was a question about whether signage was posted. We identified that the signage had been posted, and that's where we are at this point.
Okay, thanks. Thanks, Chair.
Anything else for Tillman? Well, thanks for your time, Tillman. We'll let you get back. Oh, wait a second. Esther, go ahead. One more question. You guys, you got, you're on mute.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Can you hear me? Chief Tillman, I remember I asked, and you gave me an answer about if there could be a flashing light, because there was a considerable amount of traffic in that area this week. And I was just thinking if they gave people a chance to be warned that they're coming into a situation like that. It was very crowded. And I came down the street myself, and is it possible for a flashing light, or is?
From a public safety standpoint, I'm not opposed to any signage or any flashing lights. That's a decision that has to be made by council.
Okay. Then we could speak, we could talk about that, Mayor, about maybe there could be, that it is activated by traffic, I guess, or if they stop, some type of technology like that.
Are we speaking of, of the Springfield Pike area, Ms. Boyd, correct?
Yes, yes, it was very crowded this weekend with Dairy Queen and other businesses.
Okay.
Speeding and run up on curves or something.
I'll make note, and Jerry's sitting here in my office, so he's made note of that and have that conversation with Tillman.
Thank you.
Okay, no problem.
Okay, I guess we, I guess we go forward. Thanks, Tillman. There's no more questions, concerns with police? Okay, then we could go. Okay, then we could go, we can move on to uh Public Works. That'll be with uh Tony. Tony, you at the floor?
Good evening, everybody. Um, as far as the uh, street maintenance, uh road updates and so forth, I'll let the manager speak on that. Uh, we met with the engineers uh yesterday, so he'll update you guys on that. Uh, something uh on the agenda that uh it's not, or should have been on the agenda, but I just heard back from them today. Metro in reference to that bus uh shelter up on uh Glendale-Milford. Uh, I heard back from Metro, the uh, there's some issues going on with the uh, the cost of shipping of that belt, uh that uh bus shelter. Uh, of course, that's not our issue. It's a issue between uh Metro and the uh, the vendor themselves that makes the shelter. Uh, so once they get that resolved, uh, they said it'd take a additional two weeks uh before it should be installed and so forth. So I'm looking somewhere in maybe June, hopefully. Uh, but again, uh, I'll hinges on if they get that issue resolved. Cause they did get to receive the money from the perpetrators' insurance carrier, uh, and made the purchase. Now it's just a matter of who's going to pay for the shipping of the, the shelter itself. So more to come on that.
Okay.
Um, uh, I spoke with uh Hamilton County Stonewater District. They have been out in the community, uh, really uh heavy, uh, visiting sites. Some of the businesses so forth that has a connection to the uh West Fork or that has outfalls connected to their, their uh their parking lots or their building itself and so forth. So they've been making some good progress. Uh, the mapping is uh coming along. They about eighty-five percent done, completed with the mapping. That's including the New Street, Arnold Drive and any other uh catch basins that has uh, that was not on our current map. So again, uh, they are making great headways and they are active in the community. Uh, you may see some people walking around the West Fork or just walking along the side streets in the business area. So uh, that may be Hamilton County Stonewater District just doing some mapping and so forth. So more to come. Um, fire hydrant repairs. Right now, we got a nine hydrant, nine hydrants that uh, that's still out of uh, still out of service. However, five of the nine hydrants, uh work orders has been submitted for five out of nine hydrants as of yesterday. So with two of them having a priority on Sheppil Road for the apartment complex. So we're looking for those two hydrants to be back in service by the end of the week, uh according to Hamilton County. So more to come on that as well. Uh, the tree board. There's some, um, we just met last month. Uh, we had some discussions about the, whenever uh a development occurs in Woodlawn and there's landscaping involved with that development, that maybe uh, maybe one or two of the tree board members should be part of the meeting with BZA. Or uh you, Mayor, and Jerry as the manager, you guys can bring the uh BZA up the part, up the part or represent the tree, tree board committee. And I say that because uh, if you look at the architectural plans or engineering plans of um, the Wang Lofts and that uh um, unit strut down on Hillsmith, those plans has one page dedicated to landscaping. And if you take a look at that particular page, it lists plants and trees and so forth. With that said, the village has a list of trees under an ordinance that we have adopting the uh tree board. Uh, whereas we were, we require that they meet uh with us to tell us as a tree board what type of trees and shrubs they want to plant on that particular um, uh development and so forth. Uh, we took a look as the tree board, we looked at the plans up at the Wang Lofts. At this time, there's only two trees that they're planning on planting up there that is on the Village of Woodlawn's tree list. Uh, now if, if you guys as a council feel that we should not be involved with this kind of stuff, maybe we should just do away with the tree board, period. But that's, that's totally up to you guys. But I'm just making you aware that we do have an ordinance out there that requires any development that goes on in this community. They have got here to our ordinance, which covers what type of trees and shrubs should go at that development or be planted on or utilized on that development. And again, if you all feel that, no, we shouldn't be involved in that, then maybe we should just do away from the tree board, period. Uh, so I mean, that, that's, that's totally up to you guys as a, as a council. But I strongly recommend that uh, moving forward, we start following these guidelines or these ordinances and so forth. Because these developers, they are aware that we are a tree city or a member of tree city. With that said, whoever they're going to use as a landscaping company to plant the trees and the shrubs, they are aware that we have an ordinance out there that specifies what trees should be used and our shrubs should use on their development. So, okay, any questions pertaining to that?
I do. I got a couple uh questions, Brother Chair, in terms of the tree board. So one thing that we don't want to do is to get rid of the tree board because that means that we get rid of the tree board, we get rid of that whole board. We get rid of the uh Tree City USA. So we simply don't want to do that. What I'm hearing and I believe that we probably need to do more moving forward is not so much getting somebody from the uh tree board involved in these meetings that we have through planning. That's not be, uh, through BZA would be planning. And so I think what we need to have moving forward is if a entity is coming in and with plans um, and that involves landscaping, we need to have maybe, uh, provide us a list of all the required or permissible trees or shrubs um for the landscape. That way, we can see that when they talk about that.
They actually do. They provide that information on that, that particular page in the plan, in the uh plans that they submit to the uh planning commission.
Right, but again, it, it would help if planning would see a list of permissible trees, you know what I mean? Kind of like a reference sheet, cheat sheet.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
It's in our code of honor. It's in there. They just, just have to open it up. Take a look.
But we're ma- correct. And what I'm saying, I mean, what I'm hearing in, in the conversation is, um, we're making assumption that the developers know that. That, that's what I'm kind of hearing.
Take the, take the unit strut or uh the Wang Lofts, for instance. The landscaping companies they're going to use, they know who's a member of the tree city and who's not. They know, these are professional companies. They all know, they tend to the same award ceremonies that we all attend. So they pretty much are aware who's a member of tree city and who's not. But I can almost guarantee you, they in the mode, if we're not going to say nothing, they're not going to say anything.
Okay, well, I think we need to probably strengthen our side. And I think if we strengthen our side, then we are, um, we're kind of trickling down that, what we're expecting. We can, we can have that um further conversation, but I certainly don't want to see that go away because that goes away with the Tree City USA.
Very true.
And, and that's, that's a, that's a, an award that I want to see here in the village. It's been here for some time. So we don't want to just throw in the towel.
Right. I mean, it's just that we have a history of doing that, uh, with the last development. And uh, I just recommend that, that stops moving forward and uh we adhere to our own policies and ordinances and so forth.
So moved, I agree. Okay.
Mayor, I'll make sure that's provided.
No worries.
Yeah, I think, I think he actually has.
Excuse me, I think, I think Monica had a question. You had your hand on Monica? Was your question answered?
I was just saying that I had to make sure that, that, that was in their, their binders.
Okay. Sure. So uh, just, uh, again, um, y'all, uh, Jerry's computer is all busted up, so doing an update back there. So he's here in the office with me, but he wanted to um, just share in something on that topic we were just talking about.
Yeah, the, the simple thing to do is I would make an assumption that the developer or the landscape company they're using knows what our roles are because every community can have different standards when it applies to the Tree City USA.
We can't, we can't hear. Jerry, can you speak up a little bit, sir?
Okay, uh.
That's a lot better, thanks.
You can't make an assumption that the developer or the landscape company they are using is going to know what our regulations are just because we're a member of Tree City USA. Every community may have different regulations and permitted trees and shrubs. From our standpoint, what we need to do is when a development, development is submitted on our end, when they submit it to planning commission, we have to make sure that they know that here's our requirements on our landscaping, our approved landscaping uh species when it comes to trees and shrubs. So they know when they submit, they got to comply with that.
That's the planning commission. That's their role, right?
Well, we need to make sure that they're aware of that. Like Monica said, we could do that when they do it supplemental.
Thanks, Bob.
Okay, is there anything else for uh Tony in the Public Works Department? Or Tony, do you have anything else for us?
That's, that's it for me.
Thanks, Tony.
Okay, well, we can move on to Jerry. I guess Jerry will have an update on the playing contract and try to tune in a little bit on the Recreation Department as well.
Um, well, let me just uh finish what Tony was talking about with the street maintenance. Uh, what we're looking at doing uh this year based, and this is based on our, our funding with our road tax revenues uh is, we're hoping and we're crossing our fingers, we were told we were going to get the uh municipal road fund money to do Lee Crest, but we still have a two hundred thousand dollar roughly that match to have that done. Uh, we're also looking at Woodstock, Ronnie and Tanniger to redo those streets. And then if we have enough funding left, I, I, I'm hoping that we can do Chester Road, but that is almost a nine hundred and fifty-five thousand dollar project alone. Um, just for Chester, but we'll see where our revenues are. We'll continue to work for, with Tim. But I know for sure it's going to be Lee Crest. I'm trying to get Ronnie to take uh Woodstock and Tanniger in there. Uh, we did meet with our engineers. We're going to have them come out and survey uh those dead-end streets. They just, those three that I just mentioned because we ran into a conflict with what's on cages versus what's actual right-of-way. So we're going to go ahead and have it surveyed. Uh, it's going to cost us a little bucks, but we have to do it to make sure we know where our right-of-way is because the cages maps could be way off. And then we'll, we'll go forward from there. Uh, then we're looking in two thousand twenty-two. Uh, we were told if we apply for Redna Terrace again, it's very promising that we're going to get funded. Uh, but again, we have a large match, which is basically the year's supply of our tax revenue. But I would love to be able to do Redna and the possibility, if we get a, a grant or a loan and have some money left, maybe to do May, Mayview Forest as well. Um, any questions on the road projects?
Go ahead, Pam. You're on mute.
All right, um, I thought that Chester Road was kind of in the middle of the list. So you're saying that Chester may not be done now this, this year for the second part of it? And I thought that it was a little bit cheaper than nine hundred thousand. Is that, um, did that change?
We got the engineer's estimate. I think it was nine hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars. I thought it was much less than that, but that's what the engineer's estimate came out because they believe we're going to have to do a lot of full-depth repair or what I would consider a total reconstruction of the street because some of it's in very poor shape. So that means the base is gone. So the full-depth repair, it's basically putting in a new street. So that cost is uh much greater than we anticipated. But I still want to hope that, you know, like I said, I'll continue to work with Tim to see where we're at uh on our funding uh to see where our prices with uh Ronnie, Tanniger and Woodstock come in to see if we can't squeeze that out.
Okay, because I had gotten questions from some of the residents, so that's why they thought it was going to be part of twenty twenty-one.
Yeah.
So with the changing, I just needed to know, you know, when if they ask questions of what's may have, may be the holdup. So if it doesn't go for twenty twenty-one, is that something that you're saying you could push maybe to twenty twenty-two?
I would hope we can still possibly squeeze it in this year. If not, we can go ahead and look at the one twenty twenty-two along with Redna. And then we would, again, it's all based on our tax revenue we collect. And if we get any uh skip state capital improvement grants or, and or loans. Because I would be happy if we would get a twenty-year loan for Redna Terrace and pay the portion each, it, it's a zero percent loan, pay that off over either ten or twenty years. It was, if it was ten years, we're looking roughly at a hundred thousand dollars a year and we have that project done.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Um, the, the uh, you want me to jump to recreation with the pool?
Yes, sir.
Okay, uh, an update on the pool, and this is one of my topics. Uh, I met with Pam today. First, I'll let tell you that I met with, I'm, I'm sorry, Paula and uh John today down at the Rec Center. And we're meeting with Swim Safe tomorrow, two representatives from Swim Safe. Since Paula is new to our pool operations, uh, and be honest with you, so am I. Because when I came here, it was in July, so that pool was only open for a couple, couple months and closed. And we weren't open at all last year. We're just going to go over the contract so we know what Swim Safe, Swim Safe is responsible for in, in the pool operations and what we are responsible for is the village. And also what employees do we need to hire, i.e. front gate people or anything like that. Um, so we're meeting with them uh via a conference call tomorrow, uh tomorrow morning to go over all that. The uh, the next thing is the pool slide. Uh, I was informed uh late last week that the pool slide, it's a fiberglass slide in that some of the fibers are starting to wear through. And he said, that happened because the maintenance of that slide really never occurred over the years it was up. Uh, he said, if you properly maintain a slide, you can get twenty-five to thirty years out of it. Um, he said, with the fibers coming through in the condition it's in, he goes, it's never been properly maintained. So they've thrown out two suggestions. One is to refurbish or put a gel coat on it. Uh, which is roughly, it's, you know, these are approximate numbers, uh approximately around twelve thousand dollars. And he goes, that would give us three, maybe five years maximum. Or put in a new slide. And he goes, that's going to be roughly, I'm just going to say twenty-seven thousand dollars. He goes, that new slide will give you fifteen years minimum. And if you maintain it annually, he goes, you should get thirty years out of it. Uh, if we do with, go with the new slide, they will reuse the existing uh tower and the braces. But they're going to have to widen the braces because they said the new slide standards and specs have changed, so the slides are a little wider. And they said they could do that with our existing tower and braces. Uh, they would have to flatten out the bottom of the slide because ours dives into the pool right now. And according to the pool regulations, uh, that is illegal, so they would, they would flatten that out. Uh, if we leave the existing there, they wouldn't have to flatten it out because it's an existing, it's grandfather. Um, I will tell you that they did inform me that if we do a refinish of that existing pool, a pool slide, anyone that basically has a metal button or buckle or anything on their bathing suit, it goes down the slide and scratches the refurbished paint. If they scratch it deep enough, it's just like your car finish, it's going to cause a gap, a little scratch in it. And over time with that water going through it, it's going to start causing the paint to chip. And the, the caulking um, that they would use on every, every joint, if that starts to dry out and shrink. He goes, if that starts uh to pull away, he goes, it's also going to pull your finish off. However, with that being said, I still think we need to look at refurbishing the slide for roughly the twelve thousand dollars and hopefully it gives us three to five years. Um, then we could play in a capital line item down the road uh that we put in a new slide in maybe twenty twenty-three. Uh, because if we do nothing to that slide and try to turn it on with the water flowing, since it's sad all of last year with no water on it, I think we're going to have several leaks and they're, they're going to be in there caulking that thing like crazy anyway to keep it from leaking. So I think we should probably just have them refurbish it, put a new gel coat on it and caulk all the joints. But I need a consensus so I can move forward with that because I want to make sure they get this done uh before the end of this month. If I have permission from council, I'll move forward. We can always pass the legislation later this month for the approval since it's over ten thousand dollars.
So I I.
Boy had her head up first, then we'll go to Rosemary, then we'll go to Brian. Go ahead, Miss Boy. You on mute? I'll mute yourself.
Excuse me, Jerry. What did you uh say? Did you mention the cost of a new slide?
Yes, roughly 20,000, $27,000. That's approximate.
Okay, and then 12,000 for refurbish?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
That's welcome.
All right, uh, Rosemary Brown, you had a question?
Yeah.
Did you say if we refurbished it this year, next year, we would put it in the budget?
Well, I would say. I would say we need to, we can consider it for next year. Or if the we believe that that refurbished job functioned well this year and we can get another year out of it. We can always defer the capital item until the following year. But it's it still should be on our radar for our budget that we're going to start budgeting that amount of money. And this is in hopes that we get the tax uh levy renewed for the pool. Because I think that goes to, if council is going to put it on the ballot again, it goes to the voters next November.
Do we not have?
I got.
Do we not have the money in the pool fund? For the for the, I actually I, I my perspective would be that we're doing all this for the pool. To go with the new slide. That's my perspective. If we have money, that that's my perspective.
Okay, uh, Mary, you got a question?
Yeah, so yeah, the thing that I'm I'm concerned. Um, I'm looking at the the new slide costing $27,000. Versus uh the re the refinishing refurbished at 12 grand. If we put that into capital, if we put that line, that 27,000 in capital. Our hope is that we don't have to use that 27,000 yet next year. And we can look at another um capital line item for that that pool. And Jerry is going to kind of segue into that. But I I see what you're saying, Rosemary, but you know, it what $27,000 is not just something a fluke. That we could just pull out a non-budgeted item. There we go with in the middle of the process and we want to pull this great big money out, a chunk of money, and we haven't planned it. That's my concern. If we can get away with three to four years of that that refurbished slide. With the hope of replacing it at that time would be ideal.
I know. My stipulation was if we have, if we have the money to do that. The the to refurbish it and like he said, if someone goes down with metal clips, buttons, whatever. Then there's going to be another cost because if it messes it up, then they're going to have to come in and repair that. And then if the caulking starts to peel uh go away, then that's going to be another, you know, repair cost. Like I said, if it's something that we could possibly do, my perspective would be to go ahead with the new one. If not, I understand that.
Okay, okay.
If if I. Go ahead, Jerry.
If I could add, Rosemary, the reason I was uh kind of leading toward the refurbishing of the slide this year. For for a couple of reasons. One, if you remember the old lifeguard chairs down there. They were faded, they were, they were worn, they were wobbly. And they look just looked old and outdated. To get a new, same kind we have there, they were 6,000, roughly $6,000 each. What what we decided to do was eliminate all those permanent lifeguard chair pools. And go, but a lot of other communities are going to, which is portable lifeguard stands. Large stand that's made out of PVC. It's refurbished or recycled PVC pipe and a lot of community poles are using them now. And they're portable, so we could put them in a location where we need them. And Swim Safe gave us a quote in the larger ones around, they're around right around $11,000. And I believe we need a minimum of four. With that, we got to buy umbrellas for those lifeguards. So the other thing I want to do is I'm going to add, this year I still want to buy some umbrellas for the pool deck area.
Okay.
That's why I'm saying let's look at just refurbishing because with the new capital item. Where Paula and I talked about this. We got a price to replace all the canvas on the metal structures down there that provide the shade. Yawnings, that was over $17,000. So we thought there's another capital item, let's put in for next year and plan on doing it. Next year, along with maybe the new slide or any other improvements, we want to continue to make it the pool.
Okay.
I just want to add in, I just want to add into Jerry, I think the refurbish is good. I think if you even put up signs and let the lifeguards tell the people that are swimming. That they they're not permitted in with buttons and zippers are supposed to have. Trunks. So I think that would help a lot as far as the lifeguards being on their on top of their job.
I was down. I was at the pool today and I was reading the pool rules that were hanging up. And I think the second or third one says proper suit or attire is required. No jeans and no shorts permitted. So we got to make sure that that is enforced by our lifeguards and our people uh at the gate. Need to make sure.
Is that a paper sign, Jerry?
No. Permanent metal.
Any other questions and concerns on this topic? Pam, you can follow.
Pam, you can go ahead. You had your hand up first, if you like.
Go ahead, since you're, go ahead.
Uh, okay, I I uh, Rosemary, I I agree with you, but then listening to the conversation.
Right.
But I definitely agree with what she said. And I just said, if if we could just maybe just look at it and just absolutely see that we couldn't do it. Because I think we're doing real good um with that pool and it is a surprise of the community. So anything we can do to uh with this spectacular grant opening, I I agree. If it's if it's possible, maybe, you know, uh, we hit the number. I'm just kidding, but you know. But I think we've been, thank you for what you've done. Thank you. I I feel real good about this and uh and um and the community is really excited about.
Sure.
Okay, uh. Let's go to uh Jerry had his hand up. You want to comment, Jerry?
Well, Pam had her hand up. You want me to just say, I would like to just say something real quick. If we go with the new slide, it's not going to be in when we open up our pool.
That was my next question.
They have to order it. Be a couple of weeks into June or longer.
Are we getting the consensus yet of what we want to do with this slide? Pam, go ahead.
I was gonna say, I I I agree with Miss Rosemary. Um, to a point with the money, it just depends. But when I think about spending $12,000 and all the things that you said, far as the maintenance on it. That 12,000 could end up being 20,000. You know, 2,000 here to try to repair if somebody goes down the slide caulking. I'm sure that has a cost to it. We know when we talk about something older, sometimes the maintenance cost can be. You know, a little bit higher than we expect. And when I think about um $27,000, when the 12,000 starts getting close to 20,000. You're only, you know, 7,000 off, but it does, you know, mean that we have to have it in the budget as well. And when I think of two or three years of repairs and costs. And then 15 to 30 years will take us to 2035, 2050. You know, you weigh your options. So I'm kind of split with that. Um, but I do understand what Jerry says, just having it as a capital item and a planned item. So, you know, going two weeks into June is not too bad for a new slide. But um, I totally understand what what Jerry says too.
Jerry.
Who's that?
Paula.
Good. I the only, the only question I had and concern was if we go with the new slide. And we know that the slide may not come in until the latter part of June. Or with with the rate that everything's happening now, but it being summer is almost here. And other people are placing their orders, you know, we could be looking at July. And then you take two weeks that will week or whatever to install, which could turn out to be a week and a half. Then it's August and then it's time to close the pool. Or the pool is only going to be open for a short period of time. And then we run the risk of someone um having a mishap with the slide. The slide, if we don't repair it and if we open up, we either open up without it or we open up. You know, with it repaired. So then we just have a pool without a slide.
I, Brother Chair.
Go 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 ahead, Brian. Brian has.
Brother Chair, I see everybody's concerned there, but I think what we need to come up with is what is our consensus here? Um, I I I move that our push that we go with the 12,000 to do the finishing on that. If we can get through this year off of that 12,000, I think that we've done well. Okay, and then we again put that 27,000 in capital project for next year. Now it may get to the point next year where we look at that and we may be able to get another year out of it. So we may need to switch gears. Okay, so we might be able to switch gears next year um and put the awnings in place. Um, that has a a decent sized price tag on it uh for those. Whatever, those racks down there. So that's kind of what, you know, kind of playing off to see, you know, where we can push off for capital for next year.
So Mayor, is there any delay if we just go with that um reefer? It's just it was still it's still on plan?
Are you talking about in terms of opening of the pool?
Yes.
No, no delay.
Yeah, I can call them tomorrow and say, I either have two choices, Swim Safe or our pool contractor. And I would probably just stay with the pool contractor since he has a guy that installs these all the time. And he told me how long it would take. I would probably just go with them, say, give me the proposal, I want to sign it and let's get it done.
After hearing hearing all of the conversation and all of the pros and cons, if you will. The refurbished, okay, but I really would like to see it. A new slide, if we can do a new slide next year.
True. Well, again, we'll put that in the budget and and we'll see what the outcome of that slide.
Not, yeah, not the outcome, just doing a new slide next year, just saying that's what we're going to do next year. But I'm seeing whether we can make it another year because it looks good or whatever, blah, blah, blah. But anyway, I'm good with the refurbish for this year.
Right, okay, no worries.
It could be just later discussion.
So is that a consensus from council, Brother Chair?
Oh, I I just got one more thing. Well, I see two more things. I know, Miss Boyd, I'm gonna get to you. I see you have your hand up. But Jerry, did you put in the price they were saying something about we didn't maintain the slide? Well, is there some kind of cover for this slide that we're going to have to use? Like during the winter when the pool is not being operated or there's not water going down it like? What what can we do to kind of keep it refurbished?
I I I don't believe it's covered, but I will double check. But I think what it has to be done is they have to basically like gel coat it every year.
Every year.
So it keeps its color and it keeps its original stability to to get the life out of that slide.
That's kind of like something at the end of the summer that they put that on there?
Just like wax in your car.
Part of the pool maintenance that we should be doing every year.
Right.
I agree, Miss Boyd.
Okay, are there any more questions and concern about the slide of the pool so we can kind of keep this moving?
Do we have? I I have one more. I I'm not sure if Tim is still on that the ARAP month funds, is that something that could go to the? To the pool? Is that the half that we got from?
Oh, the rescue?
Yeah.
Oh, I don't think he'd gotten a list of what he can and can't do. I don't think that's been clear.
Because if there's something that could be used, I would say go for new.
Yeah, I don't know. Unfortunately, they've they've still not really sent me a good listing of things that we can do. It's. It's possible that it can. But at the same time, I think the issue that you'll run into is that even if you order the new one. It's not going to be up and in use until next year. I think it's kind of what what everybody was trying to avoid. They want the residents to be able to utilize the slide. I will say, just kind of as as an add on, um, in terms of the pool fund. The um. Really kind of pushing it to capacity right now. We've we've got the renovation itself will be 340,000. Last time we budgeted to run the pool last year, we were budgeting about 175. Uh, we may have to uh trans, if if it really comes out to that 175 number, we'll private transfer a little bit of money and from the general fund into pool fund. Or supplement with general fund to to do the pool operations. But uh to Mayor and Jerry's point, uh per our financial plan. Our capital projects fund should start to become available next year. Uh, we'll have paid off those negative fund balances and we can start to budget for more of those capital projects as we wish to do them.
And we got to cross our fingers that the levy, pool levy passes again.
And that's what I was going to comment on. We've got to do this really good. We, you know, we're all proud of our pool. But I think how this pool turns out may run parallel uh with whether or not that pool levy passes. So, but you know, we have our new, I mean, we have our reg director and and um and Jerry and everybody.
I agree with you.
Vital.
Right.
That that our pool and I'm excited about the pool. And thank you, Jerry and Paula. Thank you.
Yeah, so.
Thank you.
Is our consensus, Chair, that we are to, we're going to move forward with the refurbish?
Yeah, I I think it is for the most part. I think that's the consensus.
Okay, and then what we can do um in the interim, having let Jerry move forward tomorrow, make that call, make the ball roll. And then we can have legislation on our on our books on the council meeting this month.
Yes, sir. It sounds like a plan.
Is that okay? Okay, all right, good stuff.
Um, okay, we can go out to, I got the recreation department. She's on here. You got a recreation update for me?
Let me take myself off mute. Um, yes, uh, our update is that we are moving full steam ahead on our uh Memorial Day walk. Which is actually on neck on Friday, May the 28th. Um, it is a joint effort between Woodlawn and Wyoming. Both mayors are on board and we have uh representations from both communities in the religious perspective. And we have a small program. Uh, the flyer will be out tomorrow, so I'll make sure everyone gets a flyer. Um, and then we'll just start hopefully drawing interest um into the event. It actually starts at 7:30 PM on that evening so that it's a candle uh lantern walk. So if you bring your candle, your lantern and it's um uh being held so that we can pay tribute to those who gave their lives. And to those um celebrating those who have um gone on through the um cause of COVID-19. So um, uh, that's one issue. The second thing is we're still moving full steam ahead on putting together our summer camp. We've got some great initiatives and we've got some community individuals who are volunteering their time to be a part of the teaching staff. So um, if I haven't gotten to you to ask you to be a part of it, this, hold on, I'll I'll get to you. If you have ideas, um, let me know too. But we look like, I'm hoping, uh, we have three kids registered today, so we're getting closer to our number, not quite 40 yet. But we're hoping to get to 40. Or if we get to 30, I'll be very, very happy. So um, that's all I have to report. Uh, other than we're are still seeking two part-time um individuals to work the front desk. Ikea goes on maternity leave on um the 24th of this month. Uh, I have two applications in and I'll I'll talk more with Jerry and with the team. Um, we'll interview them and just um start going through the process. So um, I think we'll have full coverage for the um staff for camp. And we're also going to have full coverage uh for the front desk. That's what we're still working on. The other thing that um we're talking about and we're um trying to see. I don't know much about the feeding program that. we're talking about and we're um trying to see, I don't know much about the feeding program that we were a part of. But we know that this year that we are not going to um be feeding anyone um this year at all. Uh, other than um there's another camp that's going to be housed at um our site. And what we'll do is they are a, are bringing a feeding program with them. So if there are a couple daycares, I'm not sure if they're going to be a part of the feeding process. Um, but they can join with that group too and still um have a meal. Um, but we won't have anyone onsite cooking and um doing that this year. We just don't have the capacity. Um, but I will talk with uh Ms. Patricia, I think that's her name, uh about some ideas and maybe she can um still serve. Because we'll still need help in that capacity. Um, but as I find out more information, I will um let um everyone know how that fares out.
Anything else?
Nope.
Any questions or, any questions or concern for recreation? Brian and Jerry, I see your hand up. You got the floor.
Yes, uh, just to add on one thing with the pool. Uh, Paul and I and John are discussing today. Uh, and we'll follow up with swim safe, but with the COVID restrictions and the capacity allowance. We will not be offering any free Memorial Day pool days. Because we could not handle that crowd. We'd get shut down. So it's gonna be member, uh, members are daily paid. That will be allowed into the pool because we have to restrict the number of people that are allowed in to meet the uh state's regulations on the COVID.
But we did agree that we would allow um individuals to get half off membership, pool memberships up until uh June seventh.
Yes, we did discuss the resident.
Yes, but we can't do that for the free.
I agree.
Discount needs to be approved by council.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, all right. So, um, Ms. Paula, is there anything that the residents um moving forward need to provide in terms of um residency here in the village?
Uh, as far as like, you mean I D or anything like that?
Of some sort.
Um, I would probably, I, I'm, I'm not sure how they've done it in the past. Asking people, you know, are you a resident or a non-resident? Can't ask for I D. We have a list um that Ashley put together of all the streets that are um in the village that are considered Woodlawn. Um, even there are some, there are some um areas that are outside of Woodlawn Village that are have the two five, one five zip code that comes up on our computer as Woodlawn, but um there's maybe in Lincoln Heights or something of that nature. So I, I don't think there's anything wrong with asking for people to bring in their I D. I think that would be sufficient.
Okay. Proof of residency, that's all I'm saying.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, okay, all right.
Can I, can I chime in on that since we're talking about the pool and stuff? I just had one other thing I'd like to add. Cause you, is there a way that we could check with our residents before they come down that they eat an hour prior to coming to the pool? So that way they do not spoil the opening because if they go into the pool and they happen to throw up or regurgitate, we have to shut the pool down. So it would be nice if everybody could enjoy the pool and if we're planning out giving out hot dogs and shit, I think I just understood.
I don't think you've agreed this year to do any of the, of the food giveaway. I, 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 we didn't. We talked about that and um the thing with COVID is uh prepackaged is best, but I guess if they're buying it from the cachet concessions, I haven't seen what their list is. We're not, we're as in Woodlawn, we're not hiring staff to do that. Uh, swim safe is hiring staff and putting together concessions. I mean, if that's what the, if the council says, hey, we'd like to give away uh chips and beverages, um, that's something we can discuss. Um, but um I think that um as far as the, you know, someone throwing up in the pool. Someone can, you know, that, that's, that's part of the swim safe's job is to make sure they get it out. Um, shock the pool, the pool shocked for an hour and then they're back in the pool.
It's ju- just kind of a pre-maintenance because you know, most parents want to get their kids something to eat right before they get in the water and they should actually wait thirty minutes before they get in the water after they eat.
That's hard to do. And, and, and actually they can, they can eat and their food can even digest. They can wait for the amount that's that's required and they can still have a bowel movement in the pool. You know, it just water causes kids to have bowel movements. It's really weird, but it happens all the time, so.
We could change the topic.
Mr. Lawson, you know me and uh me yourself and Mr. Burkhoff that used to eat a meal before we came swimming down there?
We, we, we would walk down there though. Now the parents just drop them off with the, with the burger in the back of the car.
That's so true.
Yeah.
Rosemary, you have a question or concern?
Yeah, yeah. Can we just put something on the website regarding the fact that we're not gonna have the usual Memorial Day pool opening is just whatever?
Yes, yes, I can, I can draft something and give it to um have Jerry look it over and then we can ask um Monica to, to do that.
And any other avenue that we could go uh to, to let, so that we won't have a crowd of people coming down expecting to get the usual.
I agree.
Okay, thanks.
Miss Boyd, question or concern?
Yeah, question. Um, Paula, we, you said that swim safe, they are going to have a concession. It's just not decided what we um, what they'll be uh offering?
Um, I'm not saying that. They've, they've prepared a list of items that they feel um would work in the concession stand. And so I just need to see the list. I know um all the other swim safe places that I've gone to where they are managing the concession stands. They don't have hot dogs and hamburgers and pizza. They don't have anything. They have like popsicles and everything's all prepackaged. I know that's what they did last year for sure because of COVID. Um, I don't know what their recommendation is. Um um, I don't know if Tim, did you receive that? Or Jerry, did you receive a copy of that recommendation for concessions?
Um, I did not. I did not receive a list of what they recommended or suggested they would be selling.
So once I get that, I can take a, I'll, I'll take a look at it and then I can, that you know, answer your questions.
Putting that on the website too as well, so parents would know what to uh, you know, the food to that are what they expect as far.
As far as concessions are concerned?
Yes, yes.
Oh, okay. Um. I'm, I'm sure we can figure something out.
Will the kids be allowed to bring food in there?
No, no. Food is not, food and beverages from the outside are not permissible.
Okay, yeah, I think, I, I, yes, I think all of that needs to be clear. I'm not sure if they did it in the past. I, I don't know. But I think all that needs to be clear to parents because I know the kids want, used to want to leave to go to the store and bring food back, but they need to understand that that's not permitted.
But, but, I mean, that's all well and good and we should be able to stop them at the door. I hate to be like this, but these same common rules were the same rules that I had to abide by when I was a kid here. They're the same rule. We weren't allowed to bring in outside food. We weren't allowed to be in the pool after so many minutes after having anything to eat. That's why they created the break time. So we're talking about all of these posting of rules and stuff. That list or that board or whatever could be forever long.
Well, it's just easy.
It is.
Have it out there in, 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 and it is in writing with someone questions. Uh, and they did bring food down there. I, I used to be down at the pool. And the children went to Family Dollar and bought food and it came back in. Whether they snack, they, they, they but I'm just saying, that's what's going to happen. You can't have food. I guess being a teacher, those rules written out is what I can always point to. We have to remove uh someone for not following directions. We have to call the parent, remove them. We have everything there.
There's a sign that says uh no out, no food or no outside food or beverage is permitted. There's, there's a sign up. So we can kind of shore up those signs and make them larger and post them a little bit more if you need to.
Okay.
Okay, any more questions for recreation? I, I do have one more question while I got to it online. I might have missed it. Do you need more help for the summer? Any summer employment for kids or anybody that you're looking for, for assistance?
Yes, we, um, when Jerry and I were talking today, we decided that we need to hire two, about four people to man the front entrance, you know, for the pool. So you'll need someone to, if someone wants to do a daily entry and uh we need someone to take the money for that, we need someone to be at the door because it's going to be set up a little different uh this year. So people won't actually be able to come in the pool and pay to come in the pool. They'll have to pay outside of the pool and then walk around and come in. If they want a, a, a membership, uh, pool membership that just come up to the rec center and get that and they come back down. So um, that's a little different than last year or nineteen, I should say. So there's some different changes.
Yeah, well, I got you. You got one more question. I think uh Rosemary wants to ask a question.
Did we ever get the security system to working down at the pool?
I, I have not aware of a, a security system anywhere.
I know that, that's something that had been talked about.
There will be no, Ms. Brown, there will be no.
And it needs to happen. Something, something needs to happen with the security system down here.
We, we received a quote from Next Step who was our new uh I T consultant. We got a proposal from them for a uh because our old system unfortunately is not, is outdated, not compatible with uh any of our new upgrades. So we're looking at a new uh security system for all village locations and it's very expensive. So we're discussing that with, with them to see how we can get this into place.
All right.
Have we ever had anyone hop the fence and get in the pool or?
Yeah. Yes.
Thank God they didn't die in the pool. Let me say that.
Yeah.
Right.
Let me say that. Track some years ago, so thankful it wasn't that type of uh, uh, an issue uh in that pool. But certainly we'll, we'll look at that um and see where we come with that. In terms of cameras.
And I think we ought to just ask um just for quality assurance about posting something that, that says what's not prohibited. Because I, I think if you have something at least that's posted, something's not prohibited. Um, and if something happens, then keeps us, yeah, so I think we need to look into how we can post those kind of signs.
Okay, okay.
Good, uh, quick question. What day is the water getting put into the pool? Does anybody know?
After they paint and it's cured. We don't know yet.
There was a timeline given last week or two weeks ago. There was a timeline given. In terms of when, when that was coming about.
It's dependent, dependent upon weather. Because it takes them, they have to put two coats down and they say they need a window of nothing but sunshine for forty-eight to seventy-two hours to make sure they get their two coats on. Uh, so that's the hindrance right now. Once that is on and it's dried, they can go ahead and fill that pool right away. The concrete is supposed to be poured on May the nineteenth and twentieth. So they want the pool filled prior to that. So they're, they're cutting it short, but the weather's been killing them.
And next week is all rain. So when I was sharing with Jerry is I just want to make sure that all of us somehow maybe next week we can cow out quickly and just get on the same page about the message that we sent out about the pool being opened on ready to open on Memorial Day.
I'll get a further update tomorrow. Okay, can we?
Thanks, guys. Any, any other questions or concern? We need to move on.
I, I have, I need to uh, before we adjourn, I need to oh, we got, oh, oh, wait, wait, Bobby. There, there's another item we forgot. The first one.
Oh, employment contracts. Employment contracts in village police division. I apologize.
Correct.
Okay, proceed.
Well, first, I'm, let me just explain. We don't have employment contracts with employees except for uh your manager and your finance director. But what I am asking here is consideration from council uh is to offer uh candidates that are in or going to either enrolled or uh going to enroll in the police academy uh that we provide them some type of incentive payment to pay for their academy uh once they've served uh years with us. And I'm just gonna throw this out as an example. And if I get approval to move forward, I'll get some type of agreement written, have our law director look at it and we can present it to council. This is something that council will have to approve. But the cost of the academy at, at uh Great Oaks is just over eight thousand dollars. So I was looking if we, in case somebody goes to a different academy, the price might be uh different. That if we max the total payout to eight thousand dollars. If, if we provide an incentive payment for those expenses related to the academy. That after two years, we could pay them twenty-five percent of that eight thousand dollars. After three years, another twenty-five percent. After their fourth year of service here, give them another twenty-five percent. And after their fifth year of service, give them the final twenty-five percent and that pays for their academy. The incentive is here to pay that back, but also to keep them employed here. Uh, again, this would be our, it, it would be selected candidates in the academy that we would want to do this with. It's not somebody that applied that's already been to the academy uh four or five years ago. Uh, or whatever, but it's candidates that we are selecting uh to encourage them to, to seek employment here and stay here. So with that being said, I could draft a contract, have our law director look at it. And if acceptable, I would like to have it sent to council with an ordinance. Uh, so that we could provide that incentive. This is something that the police chief and lieutenant have talked to me about. And I think it's probably a good idea. Uh, we're, we're hurting on retaining our people, but this might be a little incentive to encourage them to stay.
Hey Jerry, did you say four years? What was the first payment?
The, after two years, twenty-five percent of the eight thousand. So it's two thousand dollars after the second year, the third year, the fourth year and the fifth year service.
So what happens if they leave after the second year?
They, they only, if they leave after their second year and we paid them the twenty-five percent, they're not getting anything else.
I think Rosemary had a question.
I know I've been talking about something like this for I don't know how long. How is this any different? Explain, how is this any different from? Um, if we, anyone that comes into the police department. If we say whatever we have to put out to pay for them, their training, their uniforms, so forth and so on. That um Mike just came in and I lost my train of thought. That we would do somewhat of the same thing.
Well, that, if I can. We, we do pay for their uniforms.
I know we do.
We do pay for their training once they're here. We, and any other training we want to send them to, we pay them. Their time, but also the cost of the course. Uh, so I don't know outside of that, what else you're looking at paying them.
Why, um is there any way we could say that if we pay for all this, okay? I know we pay for all this. If you leave us within a year's time, you owe us X amount of dollars back.
Okay, here's my plan.
This is for anyone, not just someone from the academy. This is for, for anyone.
I don't see how.
We're always talking about that we're getting the new employees and the police officers in. They stay here for a year. We've spent so much money on them. They stay for a year and then they're gone. And we've lost all that money. So why can't we institute something like you're speaking of? For just anyone that comes, any police officer. If we spend forty thousand dollars on them, getting them trained, uniform, outfitted and so forth and so on, and they leave us within the year, why can't we have something in place that says you, uh, if you leave within a year, we've spent forty thousand, fifty thousand dollars on you. If you leave us within a year's time, you owe X amount of dollars back.
Well, well, first, we probably have to sue them to get that money. And I don't think that's logical because in, in the second, I don't think we're spending, and the chief might be able to answer this better than me, but we're not spending forty or fifty thousand dollars on a new em- employee.
I just use that as a figure.
Okay, I know we're spending the money to send them through the background check and, and all of our hiring process. Uh, but I don't know if we could, I'm sure we could have them sign some type of an employment agreement, but I think that would be a de-incentive for someone to sign up and want to work for us.
Yeah. Hey Jerry, I'd like to say, I'd like to piggyback on what Ms. Rosemary has said. Some of the same things when, when students went to school, the same kind of thing, still kind of the same contract that companies are starting to do or used to do, is if they pay for you to go to school to further your education, they expected so much employment out of you for, um, helping you with that. If it was, you know, paying twenty-five percent, fifty percent, seventy-five percent, it was so many years that they wanted you to commit to stay with them after they helped you through, you know, a part of your education, part of paying your education. So some of those contracts were kind of the same kind of thing, but it was educational, um, driven. So I have seen that before. Because the company, you know, they feel like they've invested in you and they want you to invest back into them. So I don't know if it's something you can check with Emily about, but I know in that educational realm, it was done like that.
Okay.
Well, well, we'll check with Emily just to make sure on, on that piece, um, from a legality standpoint, but certainly we'll look into that.
Mayor?
Yeah, bud.
If I may add, there are, they are currently doing sign-on bonuses for law enforcement to go from department to department. That is a big thing that they're doing across the US. So it can be done. Uh, to answer Mrs. Brown's question, why are we, uh, trying to do this now? We feel that the council that's in place now will be receptive to it. This was brought up once before and it didn't get any traction. And it was brought to the manager and the mayor to see if we can move forward to attract either non-certified individuals or those who are just ready to graduate to the academy. And their, their incentive would be we would go and identify that applicant before someone else would and say, if you sign on with us, this is what we're going to do upfront, you know, take the burden of the financial responsibility of the academy away from you. However, you have to sign on us for four years. There, that way we're not out of anything. And if you choose to leave after four years, the village has got their cost out of it. That's our thinking behind it.
That's correct. I'm just saying, to, to, to follow up what the chief is saying, team. We're look, we, we, we need to start thinking of different ways to attract candidates. Now, on one hand, we're saying to the chief that we, we want to see a better representation on his police force that represents the village. And this is an opportunity for us to explore something new we've never done before. And it may work in our favor, but we have to be willing to really open up and give things a try. We're so set, I'm saying that we're set in our ways and want to do things the old way and we get the same results. So I'm saying, let's give it a try. This isn't a practice that we're saying, or the chief or the manager is saying that we continue, but at least we give it a try and see if this works in terms of what we're trying to really achieve in terms of recruiting.
I think that's fair.
And I, I think I'm saying two different things here. One, Jerry's going to look in from the reality from what Ms. Brown and Ms. Ms. Gerald is saying, but, and we'll, we'll definitely do that. But I'm just saying in terms of what the chief has presented to us, really digging in and having some questions for him, I think it's a wonderful opportunity for us to just explore something new. Let's see if it works. We gotta get out of this box of our thinking. We, we think the same way. We do things the same way. We get the, the same results.
Any questions or concerns? Go ahead, Ms. Brown.
I would just like to say, Brian, I do agree with you. It's a great idea, but I guess it's that, you know, the village has lost so much money over time with the revolving door of officers going in and out and just to kind of protect us.
Right.
You know, before they run off. But I do understand that we, you know, we know we gotta come up with a, a better way. So maybe that is the answer, but just to know that, you know, there's a safety net for us as well.
Right. I mean, but when you really look at it, um, also is, look at the officers that are leaving us. These aren't the ones that have the, um, the, the, the lot of years of service, right? So the one that we lost, um, last week, two weeks ago, um, I, I can't go into any further detail, but out of the chief's control. Right? Out of his control. And, you know, what do you do, right? So I'm saying with this being said, let's look at that. Let's look and see if this works. If it does, maybe we need to explore and see, can we do this further down the road? If it doesn't, then we revisit that again. But we can go back and we can say, well, we tried something different. We did something different. That's all I'm saying. And with this.
Chief, can, will you follow up with me on this tomorrow?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks Bob. I'm sorry, boss.
Okay.
Bob?
You're muted.
Oh, God, I almost made it without doing that to myself.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, uh, any more questions or concern? We can go on to new business. Is there any new business that we need to take care of?
I do need to call for an executive session. And we can do that after new business if anybody has any, but I do need to call for an executive session. And everybody should have been provided the dial-in number for the executive session. Did everybody, did everybody get that?
Did everyone get the number for executive session?
I see you nodding, Pam. Good.
Yes.
Bob, uh, Kiana, yes. Rosemary, did you get it? Okay. Do we, I see you back there. Did you get it?
I have a quick question.
I'm listening.
Who said that? Pam?
Yeah.
Uh, Paula. Um, I know Tim said that we had to have the council approval to, um, do the half-off of memberships through June seventh. Did we get that or is that something that's?
What, what's our consensus, um, council? Is there something that we can put on, uh, for legislation on the end of the month? And I think it just may require a floor vote.
It does.
I have a question about that, if I may.
All right. Well, that's Kiana. Go ahead, Kiana. You had a floor.
Thank you. I know in the past, um, we've done specials on the pool membership for one day. Um, so just thinking about some of the, um, financial struggles, um, with the recreation department and the pool in particular. Is there a reason why we want to extend that further out rather than doing it like a one day, one time kind of thing?
I'm not for sure. I understand your question, Kiana.
I think it probably would be because of COVID and there's only so many people that can get into the pool. Is that your way of thinking, Paula?
That's, yeah, that's, that's what we were thinking because we were thinking not to do, it's been a tradition. Um, honestly, I guess that they got into the pool free on Memorial Day, just free food. And then they've got half-off membership that day.
Oh, no, I wasn't asking that. I'm sorry. Maybe you, I guess you all did misunderstand my question. My question wasn't about doing anything free at the pool. What I was saying was in the past, typically on opening day, if you purchased a pool membership for the year, for the season, it was offered at half price, but only for that one day. What I think I'm, I'm hearing you all saying now is that it would go through June seventh, which is a longer period of time. So my question is, is there a particular reason why we want to do it for a longer period of time versus that one day? Just thinking about the challenges that we've had because of the pandemic, not being able to generate revenue in that particular department. So my, I guess my point is if we do it longer, that means we missed out on revenue for a longer amount of time by offering a half price instead of full price.
Right. The thought was to do it, I mean, we can do it for one day, but we know that a lot of people, there's, there's a lot of change for, there's a lot of change in a short period of time. So it's not going to be free. Um, it's going to be limited in number that can get into the pool. They'll pay. And so as a concession, we just thought maybe we, if we offered memberships a little longer, it would kind of uh, make people a little bit more happier. At least they can, you know, have a longer period of time to get, um, membership.
That makes sense. Thank you, Paula.
Then fa- finally, one other thing. If they don't have the money today, they show up on Memorial, or yeah, Memorial Day, and they want to buy a membership, they don't have the funds on them that day. This gives them the opportunity to come back up to basically a week later to get their half-price membership.
Makes sense. Thank you.
Okay.
Share with, with, um, our new awning, uh, our, our slide.
Yeah, I did all that.
It, it's going to be amazing. And then we won't have to do anything. People will want to just pay full price.
I'm so excited. I'm so excited. So.
That, is that it? Is that it for Paul? Any more questions before we go to new business? Go ahead, Ms. S.
New business now. Uh, when you have new business, when you go on to new business.
That's, that's where we are now. Is there, you got new business?
Sorry, thank you.
Let's have it. Let's have it. We gotta keep it moving.
Jerry and I talked about Harmony Park today. So could you, uh, share with me what you, uh, could you share with the group what you shared with me about Harmony Park, uh, Jerry?
Well, you, you asked, or you left the message that you wanted to know when the completion, so you could start passing that out to people. And I said, I don't have a completion date. Uh, we don't have a contractor selected. We don't even have a park project completed because we got very little response back on the three different designs we proposed. Uh, so it's kind of hard to say if we had five or six people respond that that's the, that's the community's consensus. So we're going to have to reach out to the community again and find out what they're really looking for so we can try to get the plan finalized and moving forward. And as I told you, Ms. Boyd, I have a meeting next week and it could change some of the focus on this. Uh, I just don't know yet. So we'll have to see, but I will reach out to Monica to get something posted again. If we do a code red or make sure we do it on the website and get the boards down the rec center and try to get the community more involved so that we can get some public comments back. And then we can move forward.
Okay. Thank you.
I think that's all of new business. Unless there's somebody else has something else?
I don't have anything else. I just need a motion, uh, to enter into executive session uh, to discuss acquisition of property.
Make a motion that we enter into executive session to discuss acquisition of property.
Second it.
Roll call. Bobby?
Present.
No, no, I'm saying you have, you're saying you need to call for a roll.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Roll call. Monica, roll call.
So right in.
Okay.
Okay. We got Rosemary Brown.
Hi.
Gary Burkhalter.
Hi.
Pamela Fizdaro.
Hi.
Esther Bowie.
Hi.
Robert Lawson.
Hi.
And Kiana St. V.
Hi.
All right. So what we need to do is we need to go ahead and put yourself pause on this link. The number that Monica provided to us. We need to dial in on that. Um, brother Lawson, can we have three minutes? Cause I truly need to go for the bio.
What you need, what you need, Brian?
Three minutes. For everybody to dial in on that number that Monica provided, everybody.
And everybody mute themselves and the rest of us can leave. And there, if you can just take the, uh, hit the times and adjourn for me, it'll be great. Thank you.
Thank you.